Okay, now, go ahead.
We're live, folks. We're live, folks.
Right.
Live. During the whole meeting at six thirty one for group of people called.
Mr. Wilson, Dr. O'Neil.
Present.
Mr. Arkin.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Dr. Lindstrom. Ms. Williams Lee. Mr. Ryan Ross.
Yeah.
Mr. Wilson.
Hey, good evening. Same.
No, you did.
I move to end this session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, the employment compensation discipline performance or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, independent contractors and specific soliteers who fully carry testimony in a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the local government of wage increase transparency act may not be closed, shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this act. Collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees or representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees and litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of a particular public body has been filed and is pending before court or administrative tribunal or when the public body finds that the action is powerful or is imminent, which is the basis for the binding, shall be reported and entered into the best possible way. Right, exactly.
Second, let's call the wall.
Dr. O'Neil, yes. Mr. Arkin.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
I'm the same.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan Ross.
Yes.
In between them.
Point of the voiceless meetings here though. We had held it too. After two years. Roxanne, so fabulous.
We're going to reconvene this session and we're going to move directly into public comment.
Have five public comments tonight. We have one in person. This is Shanae Elmore. She's actually going to speak about the e-learning policy, which is a public hearing in special due to I don't know how long this meeting will go and pushing up to the public conference. The four are to be written in the minutes for the tax levy. So when it's been taxed, the public hearing, I will also make a statement before it's also.
Excellent.
Hi, Ms. Elmore, are you in?
While you make the way that we'll just read this, concerning matters within the jurisdiction of board of education and we will be promised in three minutes. I'm excited to be dialogue with the board and response to any questions in the next two weeks.
I'm sorry, you're a little inaudible. So I actually missed that if you wouldn't mind just re-saying it. I think you were inaudible. If you wouldn't mind me saying, who would guys like to hear you?
I'll read it again. Please limit public comments concerning matter within the jurisdiction of board of education to three minutes. This section, this section is not intended to be a dialogue with the board and the response time to any questions will be up to two weeks.
Thank you. I'm excited now. My name is Shanae Elmore. I am the parent of Emma John, who's in her first year at site and has spent four years in this wonderful school. And thank you members of the board for being here tonight. I'm Dr. Johnson and also for serving this community and making the future of workforce for Oak Park. I really appreciate what you do every day. It's a public service to all of us. So I don't come here to complain, but I do come here because I want you to hear the pain of what, what, you know, changes to schedule and snow days do to children with significant disabilities. So tonight I just want to advocate for students who are the more vulnerable population, those with profound disabilities. My daughter has, she has suffered through the pandemic. Obviously in another school district because she didn't come here till after pandemic, but she suffered through learning loss for that entire period of pandemic. She did not respond to e-learning. In fact, it provoked a very visceral response of grabbing the Chromebook and throwing it at the wall. But my daughter spent the entire time in the pandemic being educated fully by my husband who was record readings and things like that and take her to park districts and forest parts and go all over the place with her because school was completely inaccessible. She lost all of the social and everything else. For, for students with, with profound disabilities like her, e-learning isn't just different. It's basically functionally non-existent. They don't get access to school. They don't get access to learning and, and you know, you may think the policy is equitable because it's an equal policy for everybody, but it isn't equitable if you can't actually go to school and learn at school that day. We, we don't have to guess for these students if the model works because the pandemic showed us and there's plenty of research. Actually, printed some research which I'll hand off at the end, just by going to look at them. But if you're curious, you certainly can. But what we've shown profound learning loss, we've shown that people have suffered socially, we've shown that people have suffered emotionally during the pandemic. And for my child, it's just, there's, there's no opportunity for listening to a lecture on screen. It's not a cloud that, but these are, these are students who need one-to-one support. They need hand over hand instruction some of the time. They need physical therapy and occupational therapy and speech therapy. And, and those things just don't happen over a video link, particularly when the kid can't just sit there and attend. It's not personally inconvenient, which when I've complained about these days in the past in the school, I got emails saying, we understand it's personally convenient. It's not. My husband is a stay-at-home father. We're there for her anyway. It's not about that. It's that she literally gets nothing for those days and she deserves something. So, you know, yes, you can check a box for attendance by, by having that e-learning day, but it doesn't deliver education in that world. It's basically not functional. Have I seen the time?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just going to say, I don't want you to, to make decisions on the basis of one child or five child or 10 children. But I want you to think, if you must do this, if you absolutely must do this, then maybe you could add dates to ESY for these profoundly impaired, impaired students who could actually make those days back in the summer. And it wouldn't be as big a cost in school district to think about it that way. So thank you.
So that includes our in-person public comment.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our truth and taxation public hearing. Seven thirty-seven PM on Thursday, December fourth, twenty twenty-five. I call to order the truth and taxation public hearing for Oak Park and River Forest, Niceville District, two hundredth, twenty twenty-five tax levy. Notice of this public hearing was published in November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five edition of the Wednesday Journal newspaper. At this time, I ask for any written or oral comments to be received. I understand that we have four.
Four, you can read into the minutes. I think I could email you the word of the day with O four on soon if you want.
So this will be received as part of the record at seven thirty-eight PM. I'm now closing this public hearing. Moving to approval of minutes. I move to approve the number six, five twenty-five. Committee, the full minutes that's presented are going to be corrections or adjustments that need to be made.
I know that I've got a question for various minutes. Just something I noticed is some of the passages specifically reference they can identify a board member for that. And then some of them specifically say who stated what. I was just curious if that's something that we're doing forward or how do you determine whether we identify the board members.
Um, I, we, I'm trying to make a summary.
Yeah.
On this, so I'm trying not to identify the board member. I think the only person that I identify is an, let's say, something to keep that actual statement in context of the actual discussion.
Okay. Cheers. Thank you.
Josh, any specific corrections you want to make?
No, no, nothing you can make.
So I have made a motion in the second. Sorry. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Most of the minutes are approved. Let's move to instruction, State Discipline Improvement Plan. Okay, thanks. This is the third year now we brought this type of forward to the board consideration and three members of our team are going to come up who have discussed and collaborated on this plan, leading that effort. Plan leading that effort is David Rain, our assistant principal of operations, Mr. Parker, and our director of faculty, Dr. Eagle. So. But I'm not sure if you're starting to talk or should write the data for a quick overview of where we are this year and what our plans.
Okay. Guys, I can be here for you again. This is the third year of the three-year plan. So we're hoping to see some progress and depending on how it's measured, we see great progress, but of course it's also. So for those who are new to this discussion of the plan, we are a part of the identified list of schools in the state to develop and because our discipline data, specifically regarding out-of-school suspension, shows that there is disproportionate number of non-white students who are suspended compared to their white peers. So our analysis of that over the last several years has shown that we do not believe that this is a result of the bias in the way that the discipline policy is applied. But rather that the behaviors that are suspendable, that's word, are being conducted by non-white students. If there were white students who were engaging in that same behavior, they of course would pursue the same consequence. So that leads us, leads us to a greater question than the state is actually asking us. So we launched great months ago, we say this plan to try to get to the more group question, which is why is that the case? Why is it that non-white students are engaging in this behavior? And that leads us to the top of the, of really trauma and our analysis of the actual students. So not necessarily by the numbers, but going to actual knowledge of these students, which comes down to the social work and the county that work with students who have been suspended out of school behavior, digging deeply into who they are, what their backgrounds are, where they come from. We recognize that this is what research services is a result of trauma and their adolescence. So the question becomes, well, how can you really impact this data? And really, we're taking on a heavy look here, which is to try to post-trauma, try to see what we at the school level can do to both be more receptive, understanding, also provide instrument and supports for those students who really, really needs to cope with trauma and to learn how to make different decisions. Those familiar trauma work, we talked about fight or flight, maybe familiar with that. We expanded that terminology now to freeze and also some more, I get these more bond and flock. So that the terminology continues to expand. So, but it's really just a reaction to what happens when a student who is in trauma is in a situation and the reaction of their brain. And the brain really goes through one of those five reactions. So the question is, how can we help our students recognize their trauma selves? I can't even actually decide how to make a difference. That, that was, and we're thankfully, there are a lot of resources, both with the office faculty and who are already in the PSS supports that are built to surround our students. So this plan really outlines that it's going to help us be more proactive. Because of course, it's easy to identify a student who's actively engaged in behavior. That puts leading to suspension with the U of I behavior education plan. So the hope is that creating a system within black students who have exhibited signs of trauma. Thankfully, we have very good systems for multi, our NTSS, multi-tiered systems of sports, building the behavior, their attendance and the grades. Of course, anecdotal, they are coming out of social work, this is the council, the state, the states. We want to be able to put them in front of those supports in advance and work with them so that they don't engage those that end up suspended. That is the gist of the plan. It's a lot more, I just saw in the language of the documents, of course. There's a long list of descriptions, how each of the white writing supports should be working together. And just the plan is that it is our responsibility to make sure that we have a system design that is medical. Say we are, you skip to the data, there's basically a quick description on page four of how we decided to measure this, which is instead of looking at only the percentage of students suspended, because that would be reactive response. We're trying to measure, are we reducing the number of incidents that result in suspension overall? And that is regardless of the race students evolve, it's just a matter of reducing those incidents. We started in the year twenty-two, twenty-three, where we had fifty-one incidents in that baseline data. And we set, we lead at the time of the ambitious goals, ten percent in the following year. And because that number is so small, it was unlikely, we were unlikely to be able to continue that pace. We looked at a goal of seven percent of that following year, five percent we have that we achieve this year. We exceeded that goal, both cases, reducing the number of suspendable incidents in twenty-two in the year twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-seven in the year twenty-four, twenty-five, which is a slightly higher number, still far exceeding our standard. So we are reducing the number of susceptible incidents and we are on a trend to continue that this year. Whether those students that are involved in those incidents are white or non-white, fortunately the trend continues and that continues to be a work in progress. Knowledgeing that there are some pickups in terms of personnel changes, things like that, that have panned with the work. We're so committed to the work, optimistic about what it's going to look like by the end.
In our discussion.
David, you talked about flagging kids showing signs of trauma law. Can you talk a little more about that, what steps we're taking for a kid incoming freshman, for example? What, how will we identify when trauma will be born, there's any manifestation? Yeah.
At the start of school year, the very first week of school, we gave a universal screener to all grade levels in the building and had over an eighty percent response to that from students. That screener is done through our panorama portal that we have here at the school, which allows our NTSS coordinator Hannah Moore to make decisions based on the scores that students receive on that, placing them into interventions early. As you recall though, we did not start the school year with our trauma interventions. We're happy to say we have hired and we will have trauma interventions back in the building at the start of the new semester. And we're very hopeful that she's going to integrate into this and also expand some of the interventions that were done for the fall.
I would add to that, that is a great miracle set of data. We have attendance and grades as the year progresses, but anecdotal data is really powerful. We have staff in place, I think even the house equity that work with students and build relationships with them. So those relationships are key in identifying trauma by talking to them, you know, and talking to them and getting to know about their background, especially in the trouble and behavior we're in.
Is, this is something that we, where we work with either districts or the township or social services, do we need to receive a combination of any other institution about our accomplishments?
I would say not as much as we'd like. And that's definitely we have a work in progress in terms of building a relationship, especially with our, our beautiful school districts. Some of that is in place through the summer school work. We have an eight to nine academy, which should be a great place to, to students to gather data about students or identify for that program. Of course, moving up in the spring, we actually do have some plans in progress for units where we need administrators in those few districts in advance, have conversations about how they've been working with students, figuring out what, what's, or should be.
It's our passion. I would, I would offer a role of the, of the faculty standpoint. I feel worked with our outreach coordinator, works at all, this is a victory, still a success, to establish that relationship with the outreach coordinator, D ninety-seven, to start establishing some of those conversations about students that are coming our way and how we can intervene and have conversations and have conversations about expectations of student success on their way as they transition into our setting. So that is something that we are thinking about and look forward.
Now, that was my next question, sort of where, where's the responsibility for that relationship and then that communication flow? So that's under your.
Well, what about the parents? How are the parents involved in this? And what, what has there been any, any eggups or any confrontations with parents? I mean, or resistance to this sort of intervention plan? Or is it, I guess I would like to just hear more about what that possibly would be parents that be given of this early identification process with.
It's, we'd say that it's too visible to parents, because the document goes to the state. So the way that this actually looks like on the ground level is just that the school has available resources that. So for example, if somebody were identified or referred to low motivation mentors, a relationship could potentially be built with that set of parents, but it would be raised in a way that this is part of the plan. If we were trying to work through that trauma. In terms of resistance, we'll, we'll take what we can get. We need the trauma, sometimes it affects families. Families are sometimes unintentionally contributing to this, so really depending on the case, I can say it's on what level we're working with students. So of course, very difficult, and social worker, professional mentor, trauma extension, it's determining what is the best course of action to get that student support to other means of school. It's not going to be a very strong relationship with parents and if we need for outside expansions, counseling such as the strike, set the. Right, I'm sorry. Outside counseling that we can get students connected to mental support. That's been very successful. Sometimes trauma is so heavy that it's not going to be very good school. But we're all, sorry, I should mention it's part of the plan as well is Apple, which is African-American Parents Support Solution, so they're partners in terms of reaching out to parents specifically for our active and protected student population. And that, that's continually working progress, you know, their organization, roles, to build out their supports and looking for ways to make that more concrete. How do we connect parents who sometimes are struggling themselves most of the time, managing parents' skills to what Apple has taught. But Apple is a strong partner.
I will just add that I found that parents are usually very much welcoming us as partners because for anyone at the table who's had a teenager before, things start to look different than when they were toddlers and just younger children. And so a lot of parents look to us because they don't know what else to do. And so they're looking for some advice and some assistance and then add on to that, that life is very busy. They're looking for the school to like help them with the answer because they may not have a parent at home with the child who can stop everything to come up to the school. And so they appreciate the communications that we give. And that will come in different form actions. It doesn't always look pretty, but they're, I can always see that they're thankful that we're willing to partner to help some answers.
Okay, thank you for the support. Can I ask you a question about the statistics on page four? We have, in the school year twenty-four, we had twenty-two OSS incidents in school year twenty-five, twenty-seven. But particularly for school year twenty twenty-five, among those twenty-seven incidents, do you know how many unique students were involved? On top of my head, I can believe the number was about thirty, thirty, thirty-one students.
No.
Okay.
No.
I assume the number will be the smallest.
Twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty-two. Twenty-two.
Yeah, okay. So you're not, you might have a situation where one student could be involved, one of one.
Yes.
So let's look at page two. You know, the last couple of years, this report's come to us and some of us have gotten tripped up on precision of language. And they would make progress on this and I appreciate that because obviously it matters because the board ends up signing off and certain line that this is, this is going to be our official statement to the state because we're required to make such submissions because of this disproportionality and students of color being involved in our out-of-school suspension events. All right, so at the top of page two, the first bullet, well, actually, we need to go to two bullets. There's a statement that says, first, let's acknowledge the need circumstances contributing to this data. And by that, I assume you mean the result or outcome that shows the disparity. So the first statement we make references the fact that we're a one school district. And at the end of that, we say, we have few peers with whom to compare ourselves in terms of analyzing and implementation of district policies and consequently an impaired ability to analyze our policies for bias. Do we really believe that? Do we think we really have an impaired ability to analyze our policies for bias? Especially when we demonstrate a lot of good work that's occurred, that's allowed at every stage. And then on that stage, we say, we are, we're able to confidently say that our results are not because of implicit bias.
Are you?
Yeah, so the question I want to ask is, do we really believe that we are in, we have an impaired ability to analyze our policies for bias?
I can see that. And the reason why that is written that way, it's also personally coming from the district with multiple schools compared to. What we're aiming at doing here is relying on, as I stated in the, in the opening, anecdotal reports from the deans and social workers and other interventions to work with these students to be able to say exactly who we are and that the application of the policy has not confused with color of the skin. In other districts, we're able to compare data across different sets of administrators and take a look and analyze that multiple ways, which can highlight bias in different ways that we don't have the ability to do. But it wasn't meant to imply that we are preparedness, doing the wrong, not able to do anything to our own fault. It's really more of the fact that we just don't have comparable data under the same umbrella of the same district to say this is the policy, this school here is resulting, this data, our school is resulting in a different set of data. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess my concern is that notwithstanding that, and I think this is a, this is a good report in an important area in which we made meaningful progress in a very challenging objective. You're trying to help kids cope and deal with trauma that manifests in this way. So I guess I'm just wondering, you know, it's, it's, it might be worth considering whether you even need that statement at all. Because you've been, I think, you've been successful as an administrative team in identifying potential biases and mitigating. That's one, one thing. I, 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 I have to go, sorry. Can I just?
Yeah, sure, sure. No, I'm sorry.
I, I feel like, I, I agree that the word impaired is, is a bit of a distraction in what, you know, what you. But I do think there's value in stating that there, there is a, it limited between case analytical, element to this, that it's relying on the thin case analytical framework.
And maybe a better way to put it.
Yeah. I mean.
That's fair. And I'm sorry, thirty-one, correct the number. You asked me what our number count?
Nineteen.
Okay. Because it was the same, which is consecutive years, nineteen. And we, the last time I visited, it was in that chart.
You might say, yeah, that's, that's.
No, it's, it's fine. Were you going to say something else about this, the talk of bias?
No, just, what else? Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, I got I got one more thing I'd like to ask you about, which is the next bullet in that uh top page two. It says, some of our population, those whose families originate elsewhere and moved to Oak Park for better opportunities and for safety reasons. Still carry the trauma that studies indicate lead directly to higher rates of school misconduct violations. These students tend to come from non-white families predominantly or African parent. The way that's worded seems kind of weird because the implication is that. Kids who grew up in Oak Park are not likely or don't have such traumas and are also. Not likely or less likely to be students of color. That's kind of the. That's kind of the implication of this. Uh, unless you're telling me that the nineteen students involved. Are all kids who moved into our district later in their educational years.
That with that part.
Yes, they are. And that's 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 pretty much where it comes from. That's why I mean downstream. Because uh, we're able to anecdote say that uh without going down, was that's exactly what we did. Every single profile and look at those students um understood exactly what their trauma was and universally. Um, they were not more invisible.
So nineteen out of nineteen, correct?
Well, I would I would point out too, I have been sitting with students and what we've been having is no judgment lunches. And the students um in our last session actually brought to my attention that they see that difference as well. Like they, there is a um noticeable difference if you have been in Oak Park. As a student of color, from the start of your education to those who have come in high school and or started at middle school and. Transition. And the kids themselves were talking to me about the differences and recognizing. Um, just the difference in who those students are. And then as uh David was just saying, as we looked into this. In terms of the trauma that comes over, the times when you have grown up somewhere else for a larger part of your formative years.
Okay, that that is interesting. And just to wrap up then, um, probably this year, I'm less. Uh, consistent and desirous since some language changes. I I guess I'll just leave you with a flipper thought regarding. You know, whether it's that material to talk about, the inability to assess your policies for bias because. I think the memo does a good job of articulating how we progressed exactly that. And again, on the next page, you say. Speak very confidently and say it's not your place. And thank you for explaining that uh that second bullet. Now, now I understand.
The um. I want to drill down a little bit more. They perhaps not necessarily just for this instant matter. But um, at what point do we see this educational uh careers like are term? They do which are marked, yeah, and perhaps they uh are are more than closer to high school. Just more high school, more towards the uh, so uh, versus. I have to look at it more closely. Just off the top of my head, I I can tell you, go back to both. Now, analyze, because you asked that question. Um, I believe that the older that they are, um. The more likely it is that they are home to the agents. Uh, so this is pieces of mine, but uh, just to answer your question, anecdote, that um. Majority of them are school and higher. Um, that are part of any. This is not necessarily just a plan to keep my assets. I think previously. Intergovernmental agreements and working share and cooperation. Yeah, and it's very significant that if we're asked trying to reduce this issue, but if you may have. More data might not help us if 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 they're from other districts. Right, no, I think it's a, it's a important metric, just simply saying that they're coming. Uh, another district gaining point. Uh, there's something in um that uh statistic that. Is kept that's called mobility that is common in. Mobility rate is um, uh, the number of times that uh or the the mobility rate for a school. Percentage of students that are transferred at any point in their academic careers. After six thirty, meaning at unusual time. So if you get a student that has, it's already moved from one school to another, not moving to summer like it's supposed to be. And um, sometimes you'll find in schools that have a mobility rate that record or mission. Uh, because that that is a trauma that you're constantly um changing schools. Not being able to build those relationships, unable to have continuity and now develop more back, you know, social. So just looking at some of the students having. As opposed to have continuous education to the public school system is indicative of.
One thing I'll mention too, just in conversation this week with the student delegates for the board. Um, one of their concerns, we were going over this memo with us, um, like thinking about the fights that they experienced when they were in middle school. Compared to the uh what they were experiencing here. Um, and I heard uh one. Of our students mention, like, it was a lot going on in middle school. If we ever were able to have that kind of articulation where we could speak to what they're experiencing as well as. I don't know if they have to do the same recording to the state. Um, I think it would be interesting to find out that correlation. Because none of them mentioned the elementary school per se, but they all said, oh, yeah, in the middle school. And spoke to how it's different here at the high school in terms of an improvement. And I think that's because of the high school, because of their age and because of the resources we have. We have a different level of monitoring that and addressing that. At the high school than they may have at the middle school, but I don't know how prepared they are in the middle school to if it's. Something they're not analyzing like we are here to like address at that level. So that would be a good conversation where I think we could possibly be helpful there too. In terms of um just students and recognizing who students are, the trauma and how to address that. They spoke specifically about fighting and they didn't go into what types of fights those were, but just like the number of fights that they were called. In at the at the middle school. Um, and how it, when you come here, because it's so much bigger. Like there's a fear that will it be the same? And so sometimes it can be startling, something happens here just because of how it it looks. But they were comparing amongst themselves the differences between middle school and high school.
It it's also important to note that uh, and I just discovered this recently, that. This work is also somewhat coinciding with some of the work we're also doing relative to our transfer students at this time. How we provide a student uh services to our transfer students and intentional programming relative to that. Um, in particular, in terms of how we're onboarding and how we know uh where those students are coming from. Who they are, what are some needs that we may not be aware of. So in many ways, this work also coincides with that work as well, which is. Which is in progress. There's pieces that are definitely in place already, but we're definitely. Uh, at a work in progress with our uh work on our transfer students as well.
I do have a question. So the base year was twenty twenty two, twenty three. So this is the third plan. So we've submitted the plan number three. And so I just want to make sure I'm understanding, but in twenty two, twenty three, the number, the. Proportion of non-white students experiencing out of school suspension put us in that top twenty percent.
From the year before. From the year before, data is what targeted us to be on for twenty twenty one. So twenty two, twenty three data. Put us in to make plans on a new one.
Okay, so and it looks like, you know, by the by the absolute numbers, we've made progress for sure. Do you have a sense of whether the numbers in the last couple of years move us out of that top twenty percent? Or whether we continue to be in?
They do not.
They do not.
Um, one thing I I should have pointed out to you guys, that the there's actually three ways, three different types of data that the state identifies. What they have proportion houses, one. The other is for um exaltions. Uh, we don't have enough exaltions uh. To uh, you know, uh, have it above its statistics. Uh, but the other one um is for the number of um. The amount of, the amount of this, this is what I'm saying, sorry, lost my train of thought. Um, the amount of suspension that we have when we go to the other states on list, um, is miniscule when compared. That the others have hundreds. So what's not taken into consideration by the state that more students, nineteen students. Being suspended, I talked to other administrators about that, they laughed. Uh, because it's like, really, for nineteen students? How difficult is that to reduce that disproportionality with that small number? Um, uh, because we would virtually, I actually spoke about this at least, but it's just like the one alternative is to just eliminate suspension altogether. We'd have it when we go down suspending nobody. It's almost like saying, well, if you got suspended two kids and one of them is not white. We've got fifty percent, that's that's almost the the situation. So other schools that have thousand kids who are suspended. And are disproportionate have a lot different type of effect. Why I was now looking at our suspension practices as much as it's trying to look at who caused and of. But it's 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 a difficult look considering that we hardly suspect at all for school size.
Thank you. Um, so but you would anticipate that we would remain in this, in the situation of continuing to support. To submit these annual reports that are receivable through GIN, given the.
Because unless there's an increase of suspensions of another kind, the suspending that happens is an offense. In our BEP and in our structure for that students of color tend to fall into. And so. We have to either correct that happening, get into that category, or it will always exceed because we don't have us falling into that category.
Actually, the the actual achievable role of not being much associated more is to reduce the number of out of school suspension to below ten. Because then it becomes a system that's it's. That's achievable, actually, since you put that nineteen students. One of the answers. That that is the achievement of roles well.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So, do I understand where you want us to approve this, but we're not building, we're not fully building to it.
No, this will come back to us.
And we, and in it coming back, I can remove that part that we discussed in that bullet, uh, so that it. First bullet, last sentence, I'll I'll correct that so that when you see it, it won't have that piece in it or speaking to the bodies and.
So so we think that, right, so we are in this, you know, three of this three year cycle. We we believe that our data from. Twenty four, twenty five will land us in the top quintile next year.
I mean, the states.
Twenty nine, twenty six, will will land us in the top quintile during the next year.
If I were to take that as.
Okay, so we will, we will be getting, presumably we'll be getting another year cycle at that point.
I have a quick question. Um, I know. Um, special education students also have a lot of trauma. And I was wondering if like the trauma of the staff or. Anything like that is like equipped to help those students or if anything is being done to help.
Absolutely. Uh, so uh, it's not specifically identified uh because we are differentiated by uh. Social workers that are specifically assigned to special education students, you have to see uh social worker. Dean counselor, uh, the the special education population not only has specific. Those that work with them, but also have an additional team of people on the IP team. Uh, that uh we can be in with students of serious disability.
I can also add that um is the under the awareness of all the individuals on the team for students. If this type of behavior is a manifestation of their disability, because for some individuals. Some of these behaviors are a thing that they can't necessarily control on their own. And so. That is something that the team that they have works with them on. So it's not to say, well, nothing can be done. To work through it because we already know that we might see signs of this type of behavior because of disability that they have.
Yeah, so the the key to what you're asking here, and then we're all speaking to this, is the information sharing piece that takes place amongst the team members at that. Um, everyone makes makes sure that we partner to share appropriate information to serve those students. And then sometimes uh that requires us bringing in other members that may not be a part of that information sharing team to gather more information. And make sure that those students' needs are met and there's understanding that is involved in that conversation.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Those incident in two weeks. Um, so let's move on to item six. Professor's coming up for this item. This is uh. For this school, a review of bodies to be very kind to the state, your cycle, and Dr. Mr. is here to. Introduce that item. This uh is slated for approval. Unlike the last time we just discussed, it's slated for approval at the special.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you. Uh, as Dr. Johnson stated, we are receiving the approval through the board resolution. Of the renewal of our e-learning plan. Uh, e-learning plans uh have a duration in time of three years. So this renewal of the plan would allow us to implement e-learning in the twenty twenty six school year, the twenty twenty seven. And the twenty twenty eight school year. And it's be allows e-learning for uh the purpose of still conducting. And continuing tool for implement weather or others uh specified e-learning days. So these are not days that we can use for any other purpose. And you're allowed to use up to five of those days. So basically for emergency needs, um, just uh for the information, there's a process that we have to go to. Uh, go through. So it's the hearing that was mentioned. And um, we had to. Uh, put the notice for the hearing uh in uh the newspaper. We did that on November nineteenth. On November nineteenth, we also notified our staff, which included all of our collective bargaining units. We notified our parents and community as well. So all of those stats have been taken in preparation for the hearing. In the last three years, it looks like we have had two e-learning days, one in the twenty twenty three school year. We had um approximately an eighty eight percent attendance rate on that day. And then we had an e-learning day in the twenty twenty four school year. And we had about an eighty four percent attendance rate on that day. For the board's information, just to give a high level overview, our plan includes the structure. One small change from the previous plan. In the previous plan, uh, we would just implement whatever school day we were on or whatever school schedule. Uh, but for consistency purposes and hearsome feedback, uh, we will, uh, in this plan, we chose to select one schedule. And that would be the Monday, Friday bell schedule. That bell schedule does not have advisory in it. And uh keeps that um uh pretty consistent and common for our students. The learning would again be synchronous, so students would meet for all of their classes on Google meets with their teachers. And attendance would be taken in Skylark. Our plan, as you can tell, really specifies the roles of all of our different staff members. And it very much includes uh for our um our multilingual learners, for our students uh. Uh, who have IEPs and Bible fours, that all of those staff members and services would be available uh. That all of those staff members and services would be available, uh, as can be provided. And uh, it also specifies the roles of students, uh, students are expected to attend. And I, just so you know, um, we already do have students that our ed tech, uh, uh, department. Has already provided wireless devices for those students who would struggle with wireless services, they have those now. We also have our local providers, uh, it's very common for them, and they do, they provide discounted services. So that students can access the internet, and for any reason, if anyone struggles with um, technical difficulties. Our education, um, uh, our educational technology services, uh, and our administrators are all expected to be. Um, available to be able to support and help any students or staff members with accessing technology on a day. Additionally, it's fully expected students have two days to complete any assignments from e-learning. And as well as that, um, they also, as much as we can proactively. Would be provided any of the assignments um, through physical materials, uh, if N Ks will be, you're supposed to take their convos home. Make sure that they have any physical materials with them, as long as we know, uh, that the incremental order is coming. If it's very sudden, then obviously we wouldn't know. The other thing I wanted to add is that it's very common practice for districts to have these e-learning days, uh, some of that started, uh. Um, even prior to COVID with with cert, you know, with waivers from the state, but obviously very, uh, uh, was for everyone as COVID came around. You can always choose not to implement those days if we have severe conditions where we feel like, uh. Uh, you know, uh, that um, our our students would not be able to participate in learning. And where we feel that our staff um, would also maybe, uh, you know, not be able because of conditions uh, to be able to participate. So things like state of the market, see those types of things. So with that, um, if you have any questions, um, uh.
I'll start, um, I'm I'm curious, I think you said the only substantive change to this new plan from the past one is that we're going to. Use the the Monday, Friday schedule.
Monday, Friday schedule.
So the synchronous versus asynchronous, that's exactly as it was in the previous plan.
Yes, so our our previous plan, uh, during COVID, um, there was definitely, and and all schools. Um, had had a different schedule that had a hybrid, that had a probably synchronous and asynchronous. Uh, but uh, since COVID, from as far as I can tell going back, we've always had a synchronous learning plan. So synchronous, uh, live.
I have two questions about input from a stakeholder group, so the first is, can you just talk a little bit about the faculty senate perspective? On any preferences or input they may have given to the meeting?
We've only had, we've only had, uh, one comment, uh, from a faculty senate member, a member that was brought forward. And that was a request to um, uh, consider asynchronous learning.
So, and maybe you just said this, but can you explain again in what way the input from faculty and staff was stopped then? So it sounds like it was maybe an open call for comments which could be submitted, but is there any outreach to the faculty or the staffs?
Yeah, so on the nineteenth, um, the plan went out, and uh, anyone is invited to provide um, feedback. And I had one staff member come this evening in my office.
Okay, thank you, and then is there any mechanism for student input into the design of the plan?
You know, I guess then.
Can you elaborate on the desire to um, move instead of the, to the the standard on the day? Taken to the set Monday, Friday, um, so that the individuals, that director, individuals society to have that. That standard.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna be transparent, it was administrative decision.
Okay.
Uh, due to uh, keeping things standard. So for example, let's say that it were Wednesday and we had the late start. Um, you know, uh, you know, that creates different things in, in the previous plan on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Advisory was canceled, so advisory would be canceled, so this just means that the teacher's preparing a student. Students don't have to think about like, what day is it, what is, what am I doing? They know that this is going to be the Monday, Friday schedule, we're going to have all of our classes with the exception of study halls, if if they have a study hall. And um, uh, there there's no change in timing of when the classes occur, lunch areas and those types of things. So it was really so that there's no question, it's just if we have an e-learning day, this is going to be a bell schedule.
But wouldn't, if then every, every day is like, a student comes to school, they have to know today is Tuesday, it's still scheduled on Tuesday. So wouldn't it be less disruptive to their normal schedule and kind of pattern? To just have the bell schedule and the 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 course order and certain stuff, as like they went in the other day?
Our thought was that standardization, making it clear what the schedule was, would be easier for implementation for our staff and for our students.
If I can add one, Dr. Esther wasn't here when we were doing uh, the talent, their first, it's here to, so once they all add to the speech that we learned. Uh, their best experience was that the longer the class period for the students, the better. Because that allows for uh, teachers to, uh, they have more time if they need to work out one-on-one time with kids during the during the class period. Um, and uh, it uh, allows just a more even pace for students to get through the day. There's something, there's something about the fact that every other schedule we have, I'll go through that Monday, Friday, would be a shorter class time. Right, that kids, that's maximize that class time, if the teacher can give a sign, the kids can go work, right, that would be. You know, that's the all right there room, so it doesn't strip the teaching and the instructional kind of dynamics, it does just allow.
Yeah, there's a school thought that. That e-learning, uh, we know there are students who, uh, specialized students, profoundly disabled students who rely heavily on supports. From adults that would still access education, and there's school thought that says that. If the e-learning is not going to provide those supports and that uh, and to ask those families, ask those students to to try to replicate their. Learning experience from, oh, it's just, it's just not helpful. Um, so you know, what what do you say to those families and and the students? Um, I think, I think the logical extension, that argument is that we shouldn't be doing e-learning at all, which is no good. Um, and I, can you, can you speak to that, just as philosophically?
Yeah, I would just say, um. I I think it's just really important to put out there that the e-learning day is never going to replace, uh, the uh, the interaction between a teacher and a student. Um, the services and all of those uh, very meaningful things that the teachers do. On a daily basis, we're, we're never going to be able to full- fully provide that in the, in the virtual setting. Um, for our students who, uh, uh, who uh, need extensive services and have extensive services in person. Um, really, uh, our our teachers, um, and our and our case managers. Would uh, communicate both with the families and with the students, the appropriate learning that could happen on that day. And realistically, it it is not going to be matched in those circumstances, um, in a way that would be in the classroom in person.
I'd try to one clarify about who mentions, do we? I should know this, I am actually a parent, it's just parent as we speak. But do we mix and match currently, sometimes depending on what the weather situation is, it might be a snow day, or it might be an e-learning day? Or would we, if school was inaccessible for weather or other reasons, would we almost always have an e-learning day unless it was an emergency?
Yeah, maybe. Yes, yeah.
I would say six months and I don't know if I answered with her.
You know, it is incredibly common, but it falls, whether you like it or not, but it's both, that approach that schools take out is this is e-learning is at this point, because it preserves the schedule for the calendar. Allows uh, that semester or that quarter, it's certainly intact with a number of days, you know, so it's, there are a lot of reasons for it. Uh, that is the cause, I do not believe, since we have come out of the pandemic. One or two instances that we've had, uh, England and others that we have done anything but an e-learning day. We were about to do a real snow day about, well, it was two or three weeks ago, there was a fair, you know, huge front coming through. Uh, we, if we had made the call, if that front did come through and disrupt the, you know, school, I would have been anticipated, we would have had a snow day. Uh, because uh, our teachers, our, as our, our bill, we weren't ready to, we're not too, it's will be an e-learning day. And it also was uh, independent of just D two hundred, you know, we always try to act, we will always continue to try to act in concert with D ninety seven, D ninety. Because uh, you're talking about families at this point, you know, if you're D nine, you're D. I'll cut this off. So if, indeed, if D ninety, D ninety seven are going to have their students at home, you know, for a regular snow day, we have been learning. There's a caregiver problem at home often, right, that presents itself. And so we really try to be in sync with those, and so in that case, uh, one of those school districts, maybe both, but I know definitely one of those school districts was that. Case they were, they actually were not going to be able to do it on a day. And so, uh, you know, we'll try to be in concert with them, so the fact that we'll have this time and place is important, it's probably that place could approve by the state, you know, so we can act. But it doesn't mean that we automatically go to an e-learning day, as Dr. Hester said. Um, but it also does not mean that we will default towards snow days either, right, so just it gives us an important uh, flexibility. Does that answer your question? Well, it's.
Yeah.
What it is.
Yeah, I think so. And Tim, did you feel like your question about just philosophically the approach to a premise for e-learning versus snow days, did you feel like that was answered?
Uh, I mean, there was an answer, I I I, to me, it it feels like, um. That the e-learning day and the snow day, they they're choices, and they're they're choices that we're going to make. Um, you know, in each given situation, and we're going to make those decisions in concert with your districts, that's appropriate.
I had one last question, mentioned that many of the internet providers. Services. Well. I was at the loaded board, which is how the history of the summer, of the school.
Yeah, I believe it's, I can check for you shortly, but I believe that is done through the registration process. So that is how, uh, we distribute, uh, um, uh, the wireless, uh, you know, devices, that is how, uh. We let them know about the services, and that, yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that was really important. Can I go back to, just in address, uh, to uh, Dr. Rodel's question, two silver and horse? I think you were asking, was the question answered, because I think the question was about the, the services for special education students. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I answered that.
Yeah, I was really very more to the peak of the question, which is, is, was the extension, like, in general, should we do e-learning days? Or should just stay with the days, that was the answer.
I would say, just to to reiterate what Dr. Johnson said, I really feel it's important that we have the flexibility. Um, to do it, and if you think about it, if we ever were somewhere even at a volume of days. We would, we would really, uh, want to have that that flexibility because of the five emergency days at the end of the calendar.
Yes, so, and I just asked, the reason that we're voting on this tonight is why? We want to make sure it's in place sooner. Okay. And you said a second ago that on those uh, days, a week or two ago, where you thought it could be from coming in, you said, uh, quote, uh, ready. Right, what constitutes ready, what constitutes sufficiently time for you to decide, you know? Well, in that, in that, in that case, we had not sent out a plan, I mean, obviously we're in a super group here, but we had not sent out a plan to our faculty staff, we had not discussed it with our faculty and staff. Uh, what we like to do at the very least, um, is make sure that all of our faculty, staff, you know, take their devices home. You know, if we think something's coming, we could, we didn't guarantee that everyone had something at home, uh, because we weren't able to that message, so it's, it's things like that, it's very practical. Okay. It was in my day, yeah. And, you know, I. I guess I didn't recall that there was a one e-learning day in twenty twenty three and another one in school year twenty twenty four. Was, were those both weather related?
I know the twenty four was, and I'm obviously having a hard time recalling the, the one from the year before, please.
Is there any reason besides weather?
I don't think it's the one that wasn't either extremely cold or snow.
Yeah.
But why, so? At the consensus.
In the summer, yeah, the, in the, right, yep, in the summer when we had the generator or the transmission.
That was a summer school.
Right, in summer.
So electrical and plumbing during the school year would not be approved for e-learning.
That's exactly right.
Right, that would be a a facilities issue and not an emergency, and not an incremental other.
It's a summer school.
We didn't think about it.
Okay, so what kind of emergency talk about, um, weather or?
Well, it would be, uh, things that the state deems as a state of emergency, we honestly, we really want to check with the state if you're not using it for any weather. We really do, we want to be in touch with, uh, West Forty, you know, uh, we want to be in in touch with with this, we need to make sure that it be available. So we don't have to make up the date later.
And we've done such mild winters, there hasn't really been a case that I can remember, you know, I got a kid in the school almost continuously since twenty thirteen. Um, where there was actually a significant block of days through weather. Um, if that were to occur, let's say, three days, for example. If you decide to use them as snow days, that means you're going to bolt them on the backend of the school year. Hypothetically, instead of finishing option one, you might finish option four.
Right.
Okay. So in that scenario, let's say you experienced that block of days in December. Would you then move the finals of the second semester back because you have these additional days on the backend, or not?
Our students ask us the very same question, yes.
You would move them back.
Yeah, you would most likely move them back, and I will say this, it would all be a decision. Uh, that we would, uh, that we would make, they also asked us to move and move back graduation. And um, uh, that would be very difficult to do.
Yeah.
So, um, but for the finals, we'd really have to, we'd really have to look at the context and see where we were, but in most cases, you would move their finals back.
So that's interesting, because, you know, the current status issue is, can we count e-learning days towards the minimum state number of one hundred and seventy six days?
Yes.
Uh, and there's a convenience factor, factor to that, because if you can go ahead and use e-learning, then you don't have to falter the backend. If you had said, no, we're not going to move the finals back, then this. Educational day, the choice is, I can have an e-learning day in December, or. I can have this extraneous day on the backend where kids are both going to watch movies. And go to the gym and do whatever, so it's, it's essentially not all that educational, it's simply be physically present day rather than a learning day. But you're saying, though, that if you do have meaningful snow days, they won't be just be physically present, they'll actually get. Effect effectively spent in that period of the second semester prior to the. Finals such that you have normal classroom activities and education going on.
Those would be, all of these things are so uh, intentional and conditional too, they would have to be. Uh, collaborative decision-making over finals and uh, very clear communication. But in many, you know, back a long time ago, you know, uh, in many cases, you would end up moving finals, um, because of finishing out the semester. You know, because of having the necessary instructional time for kids to be prepared for the finals.
Am I correct in assuming that if you're gonna move back finals, you you really have to have a cluster of significant number of. Emergency days to cause you to do something like that? Because it's just one, for example, like in twenty-three and twenty-four. I'm assuming you didn't change the final schedule.
Well, twenty-two, twenty-four, e-learning days.
They were.
And so, but to answer that question, and. We, well, we haven't discussed this before, I mean, over this, even if we had one true snow day during second semester or first, you know. We would, we would probably, we would definitely entertain and almost likely move finals hands that way. All right, now that would not affect our seniors, you already mentioned graduation. Seniors already have a set of finals hands that will continue. Case, probably the exact same days in either side. One other additional factor we're throwing out, uh, that is part of the contextual consideration is that uh, the board recalls that. During a regular school year, you know, the calendar, finals, especially in that context. Second semester is much longer. In some contexts, maybe some some years, maybe it's ten days longer than first semester. That is another reason. To continue with the e-learning context, especially first semester, when we have them. To, because you pull a day out of first semester, you pluck it in second semester. That's not apples and apples. See, even, you know, and e-learning and regular school days, that apples and apples either, I get that. But it's even more of an experience uh, in in that situation, that's where. I think, particularly with first, that's discussing a lot of this.
You know, I'm I'm asking all these questions because uh, I'm extremely skeptical of e-learning days. It's a misnomer to me as a parent. Who had a child, you know, PRF through the pandemic. It was terrible. It was just a a false uh. A a false impression of a of a school day, quote unquote. So to approve this plan merely gives you the flexibility. If you need to use an e-learning day. And now you believe that. You spent that, you spent a day on e-learning and not on a snow day. It's not like you're at least gonna get some contact with with teachers and staff. That would have otherwise just been one of those, I'm physically present, you know, type of days. So so we're just basically granting the permission to have the flexibility. But I guess I would say.
That's right.
I I'm leaning a lot towards snow days. I might as well be bold snow days.
Well, perhaps maybe to, uh, one, wait, this is getting a little, but but uh, Dr. Johnson, I remember speaking today, but. Deciding whether or not to call that their obvious snow day. You know, we talked to people, it's kind of a field day, you know, um, maybe to perhaps only be some concern, so it was gonna be considered. To help with such a random, as to what results in learning day versus snow day. So it is more predictable. And maybe it's it's more likely that he made it up with a snow day as opposed to a day.
So I I also am like a, like Graham, uh. Skeptical of e-learning as a uh, a viable uh, vehicle for for students. But I think what troubles me most or why I'm I'm struggling with it is the, there's undeniably a trade-off. That's couched in this in going to be learning, or you're essentially trading off. Um, what amounts to in some cases, um, assumption on access and in some cases equity to parents spoke to. And so we're making a very conscious. Trade-off for convenience, those two very important things, which makes me uncomfortable. Um, and uh, whereas if we, it was snow days, we're not making that trade-off. And so. I I would be inclined to not vote for any student learning. A a approach based on that alone. Uh, that I would more prefer. So it is, uh, it just seems to make more sense if we're going to be committed to. Equity amongst all our students and also, um, you know, I am uncomfortable with making assumptions on access too, because just because we operate a registration. Everyone likes to. Take advantage of the things we're offering to them. And it also doesn't make any account changes that are during, during the year amongst families. Who's can no longer afford. Access. So, you know, these are things we don't monitor in real time. So for those two, I guess, those two two principles.
Can I just comment on access though, because it needs to really be put out there for all of you and for our public. Our kids need that access to the internet all the time because of how many applications we have. So that is. Uh, that is one thing I'm just to, just, I just want to assure everybody, that's one thing we try to stay on top of all the time. That kids have access. It could be really different on any learning day, I agree, but I just, I just want to be quite sure that. We do stay on top of that and maybe be able to avoid errors.
I I really appreciate that. I I couldn't help it. And it wasn't uh. Casting that dispersion necessarily. I just, I I I, but I I do think that this, um, I am uncomfortable just thinking.
Well, I, I mean, I I don't understand, I can kind of see the the benefit in certain aspects. So imagine you have a snow day right before finals. Or excuse me, you have a reason, you have an emergency day right before finals, this is December. Okay, do you want to completely de-eliminate the opportunity for all the kids to have contact with our teachers a week before the finals? If you declare a snow day, then basically you're. So so I can, I can see the benefit there. Um. I guess what we're being asked to vote for now is the sufficiency of this e-learning plan. And should we submit it to the state so that we can exercise such days? Uh, in order to meet our statutory requirements of one hundred and seventy-six. That's what we're being asked to vote on. Again, as, I mean, as a parent who lived through it. It just reads like. Lipstick on a pig through that lens, okay, through that experience, okay? So I guess. You know, I would vote to submit this to the state so we have that optionality, but I would ask as a board member or a ton of transparency. Around the thinking, the criteria, the decision every time you choose to hit this point, snow day versus e-learning day. The what, the why, for, for, for uh, feedback if you're making that decision, even if that's, you know, texting us at, you know, midnight. I guess that's that's what I would ask of of the administration. Thank you for opening that door. Well, I'm a nice person, okay? Yeah, the things I am, I'm texting.
I want to be one person to speak to the board. Uh, let me say a few things. I appreciate that. Thank you. And I really also thank you for this, this conversation here for the setting. I mean, we all know that the e-learning. Uh, that we all experienced, whatever side or wherever we we were on this during the pandemic was incredibly challenging. The type of climate we're putting, that we're discussing here, I think it's really worth saying in a lot of ways, is not that. Right? We are not talking about putting something in place that is the pandemic day in and day out experience. I appreciate that you brought up one very specific example where we really desperately want that e-learning. Right? To preserve some sort of teacher content just before or after that, so it could be realistic scenario, actually. But there are other situations in which, and I think, uh, so Mark wants to speak of this, where. Um, e-learning, uh, for some students, right, actually has some benefits. And I think it's important that we don't. Cast an understanding of what e-learning is for all students and really kind of draw universal strokes. There's. There's nuance to all things, and there's a little bit here. You want to speak about it?
Yes, just to add in that social emotional piece, um, I recognize that for the majority of individuals who are. Were very proficient at in school learning, um, they experience a shock with the virtual learning. We also have a student, like our school users, our students who have anxiety because our building is so large and it's overwhelming to them on. A lot of occasions that thrive in the virtual community because they were able to interact with classroom environment in a different way. That didn't set off some of their emotions. So I just say that, say, out of three thousand students, um, even as we heard it in the public comments, that we don't have just one type of learner. Who benefits from just one type of experience. So where some students found it a nightmare, others were like, why can't it be this all the time? Who come up to me still in school today and say, why can't we just go? And it's like, it can't just be all of one. But do know that this is an emergency plan. And it is meant to help with the continuity of learning in the midst of a snowstorm. Or or an ice uh, event where we're below twenty degrees, we sometimes get in the Midwest without completely interrupting. And with regards to the end of the year, the only way to keep that viable as a real additional day is to consider moving things backwards. If you don't do that, it becomes. A gym day, a watch movie day. If you move everything to adjust it, it becomes a part of the learning, which is. In fact, what it's supposed to be, a makeup day for something that was lost. It's not meant to just tack a day on to check the box and say. You stay in the school, another day.
Thank you.
Sure, I appreciate that. All right, so we are going to come back to this, this special. We're gonna go a little bit out of order. And ahead of the finance items, we're gonna take uh, the governmental agreement, and the governmental agreement will go per township.
Uh, thank you for making the adjustment here on this. So we have some guests here today, and so I'd like to talk about all possible. Um, for a long time, we've had a relationship that is multifaceted with the township to provide services for students of variety likes. Uh, one that really hasn't come forward to this board a long time for discussion is there's there's helped support over the past ten years plus. With our 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 activities, our school activities. And so this really had been something that had been out one year in, you know, year in, year out. To a agreement with uh, Senate Township and um. They reached out. And there are, there are a few folks in the township here too. I don't know if you want, I'll let you, Andy, I don't think I'm table about to. Or who are ready to do spokes as they want, but uh, this is a chance for us to make this more formal. Uh, and more ongoing, to really formalize this relationship. I was really thankful, um. When I reached out and said, hey, I have an idea, Greg, let's see if we can make this thing work. So I think this is a good idea. And so I don't know if you have any more uh, suggestions or introductions you want to say or. And while Andy also, it'll be just for a second and um, we'll take it.
Um. Um, so yes, we are very grateful for the support that we've had from the township, um, specifically for our intermurals program. Um, without their support, much of what we do in intermural support would not happen. Um, and so when this came forward from Craig and Megan here. Um, I was very excited. Because this will just continue our partnership. Um, and just like one last thing, uh, you know, Megan and I were talking about like. The yearly going through the application and then going, um. Part of the application process is that we also attend the application review. Um, so Megan and I agree that this would just create like a seamless. Procedure and, yeah, and just very grateful and appreciative. Um, so some of the things that you, just to explain some of the things that it pays for for intermurals. Um, we have a significant bowling um, program. But we do this at circle lane. And in order to do that, that costs money. Um, so with the contributions from the township, we're able to pay for that. And not have to charge the students a significant amount. We can keep it pretty minimal. Um, we also have a wonderful boxing program run for our intermurs. Um, you may not realize, but we are over at for our pan boxing gym. Um, and for Pam, we're not a great deal with us, but still it costs quite a bit of money. Um, and we are able to pay for that through the donation from the township. Um, and then there's some supplies and various things like that, but those are two of the major things that we've been able to do through the um, contributions from the township. So, thank you.
Let me just say really quickly, oh, let me just say really quick before I open seven questions to you as well, first, um, that, um, this would come back. Uh, when we, this is, secondly, uh, this is, uh, I forgot my thing, I know it's gonna be second, um.
All right, why don't you ask your questions?
There is an incredibly important second. Okay, uh, well.
And the question I need to really isn't, ap- apply to the. The township, but just overall. Intermural program. Um, and uh, one of the things I'd like to see is uh, kind of a. A status report of what the intermural program is. Um, participation numbers, some of the data, uh, but also, um, looking, looking forward. In in terms of, uh, how, how the programs will be affected with the new uh, facilities that are going to be included. Sure.
Yes, um, and. Mr. Harbin, uh, Dr. Johnson and I have discussed what that is going to look like next year, um, with hopefully the opening of our new facilities. Um, we have. We would like to really create a much more comprehensive program, um, of intermurals. Um, and I've been looking at a couple of the schools. That have some really robust intermural programs. Um, I specifically was looking over at Stevens and a new chair. Um, I know both the activity structures over there that will see the new girls, and I'd really like to tap into them as a resource on how they've um, structured their programming. Because uh, Dr. Johnson and I have talked about how we would very much like to increase our programming and the partnership with the township. That solidifies that for us, that we will be able to fund that consistently.
Okay, okay.
It's great to see this. It's super exciting to formalize this. Um, we've had several great student showcases with the intermurals that you are are included here, so. Hundred percent for it. It's great.
Uh, is the belief that the, the, around how it ended up, tends to from thousands of people to go.
Mostly the, no, so some of the things that aren't covered by this are um, the payment to the staff. Um, because that, that's not part of the agreement, so that's covered under a district budget. Um, and then sometimes we can't cover everything, so we do occasionally charge, depending on which program it is in intermurs, we do charge the students of the. Um, and we calculate that out based on. What the township has granted us, and then we calculate our costs, and then we decide how much we need to charge the students for specific programs.
So so part of this, this agreement, it's, it's in states that. The intermural programs sync from the districts athletic and physical education departments. And shall not utilize athletic department or physical education funding for that, or they have resources.
That's correct.
So, so, I guess I believe it's one. Why, if the district is already paying for certain things for its physical education athletic program. And we don't believe that the grant, that that the uh, township's allocation. Will sufficiently cover all the expenses. Why not also be able to use district resources that are there and are in available?
So to answer that question, um, in all of student activities, we, um, including, um. Whether it's art club or culinary club, we keep very consistent in that we do not touch the curricular funding. So student activities is funded only through student activities. So any of our clubs that cross over into like a curricular type club. We, we don't touch that. That is specifically meant for the school day.
And that's a, that's the policy of, that's required by almost any education code.
There are some funds that we are giving third tier developers that need exclusive for that. But more so, it's just really best that, um, the use that we put into our whatever, you know, have. Yeah, we experience during school day is different than what you might experience during an extracurricular program. Um, and so we want to make sure that for each of those programs, right, that material is exactly the condition that we know we want to be in, right, for for. For them to exist. But more often. But more often than not, besides that, you know, we have something like girls' flag football. Uh, which is now grown out of this uh, this whole program to be, it's an IHS A sport. It's a completely different set of equipment, right, and resources that need, that aren't necessarily, uh, you know, baked or. So, you know, it is independent before the conversation is done, it's there. Uh, but we really do want to make sure that they're independent for organizational purposes, guaranteed that each program is ready to go exactly as it needs to be, uh, each school.
How was the use of that when Greg was doing school day differently?
Um, that's a good question. Um, I don't know if I can answer that too directly. I think that's a very question. Yeah.
That's what I was saying. We don't want to return damaged goods to the PE departments. Um, so it's.
Sure, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to, to, to use, you know, working studying, like, try to.
Can I speak exact language, Joshua? Exactly.
So if I go to, I don't know if I will read, go to the second page. Chapter one point three is programmed.
I see it. So, yeah, I see. It says shall not there. That, so this is our practice generally is that they don't. That is not meant to communicate universally in all situations, we never get into that. But it's generally, I I I described it as general best practice. We try to avoid that, but I I'm sure there are instances where just logically.
We're the rest of the world. We need to grab one.
It also.
Right, so I I'd like to, I fully get part of that program. I think it's wonderful. I would like to make sure that the language reflects you, right, and what we are.
Which brings me back to the second point earlier that uh, escaped my mind for a moment. I know that the township has had uh, recently similar conversations about the IGA. And there might be some subtle changes uh, that are a result of those conversations before everything is back in two weeks uh, or are born to approve. Uh, any of those I'll flag, and if we change any language here based off of this conversation, I'm gonna shut that down. Okay?
Just uh, continuing gratitude for the township's support over the past years, and we really look forward to uh, uh strong relationship.
Should say we have Megan back in the St. Gary's. Do you want to say anything? You heard people from.
Yeah.
You got a chance, Chris. First and foremost, Ed Mitchell, township manager. Uh, we've got Amy Trapp, who is our director of founding services. And our township supervisors and town sincere support as well. We wanted to thank 1500 for its ongoing support and partnership work. This has been a great opportunity, and it came out of our founding services, can we find a way to streamline the processes or staff and kind of clarify a very longstanding relationship that we've had with the mayor and the bishop for both sides. So thank you all for being a good partner and great partner with this when it comes to intermural program. We're excited to kind of see where this all takes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now onto return to like seven, eight, finance. Fund transfer.
Great, thank you so much. So um I will be on Zoom. We have our director of finance, Brian, but I'm also coming out, yes, it's it's, we introduce and present the second related questions.
This is uh, the annual interfund transfer to cover our bond payment or test payment for the uh, working catch funds that were issued for Project Two. So uh, just for sake of uh, bringing this for board approval, easier to move the money over for the savings.
And let's move to the next one, it's right underneath. So be the CIP, which brings up Princess Dollar Technologies.
Okay, uh, let's see if I can keep my my street show up here. Uh, uh, this is our uh for those that are on the board, uh, pretty humble bracket, what if we bring the uh bids forward for the uh, CIP work for the summer, then we have our scope of work that we know uh that we'll be doing, and we will um, then bring the asbestos abatement presentation forward. Uh, this item is for the asbestos abatement for uh, this yet be work. Uh, the um uh, hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred dollars with both alternates included, uh, fell within what we um were carrying in our soft cost lines. We um, you know, no surprises here with this number. Um, but because it's a separate contract that uh, we manage, uh, it it brought forward, uh, it's on hand.
Yeah, I was a little unclear about scope of work. Um, and what's included in the base and what is one alternate, one and one. This bit is close to the alternates, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, um the the two alternates, the one alternate, the first alternate is for um from entrance seven, including all the windows and entrance and to the east of the building, to the corner. Uh, the second alternate covers from um, entrance seven to the west side, the west corner of the building. Um, the rest of the work, the base work is, is uh revolves around um the uh, asbestos abatement in the classrooms or piping, flooring, thing like that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, before we move on then, I I just wanted to take one second to recognize that uh maybe not for all asbestos related items in the next few months, something may pop up, but uh, this is Mr. Bourbon's final CIP uh, asbestos presentation for the board. Uh, it's something retiring in a few months. Uh, so just wanted to recognize that and uh, thank John for all the work you've done for this year.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I I, are you, I have a question about our, about our use of of P. Brown, uh, associated with the business in this process. Um, how common is it for us to use a, a consulting firm to solicit bits and how frequent is it that a school would use a consulting firm versus that process?
With the level of complexity of our building in particular and its age. Uh, it's very common for school districts to use a firm, uh, Peckron. Uh, has a lot of history with the district, but we did take uh, uh, the, do an RFP uh, last year. Everybody remembers right around this time. Uh, it just was time to um get uh, get numbers updated and um, see where pricing fell. Uh, they came in as our lowest, most responsible bidder in the uh, bids last year. Uh, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, I believe it's a three year that we did with them, a three year contract. That's correct, yes. Um, but uh, they've done great work for us. Uh, I think it would be um uh, where they really come into play is um, it's not uncommon here, and my way the comic didn't joke about the asbestos is um, as we're doing um, say, work internally at times, we'll run into something that we see um you know, or, you know, that was there, we need to test it, see if it's hot. Um, comes back positive or negative for asbestos. Uh, Peckron's very responsive, it can do that testing for a very way. Thank you.
Why, why don't we have Gil Payne there? We're, we're doing this, this kind of uh, bid analysis for us.
Usually um, a contract manager or general contractor does not want to handle um, that process because of insurance liabilities and that kind of thing.
So it's asbestos specific?
Yeah. It also uh, not to say that Gil Payne would do this, but common best practice too is um you know, they, there's times we, it happened with Project Two, you know, we had a wall that had um, uh was hidden behind another wall, if you remember, and we had to move forward, somebody did all the asbestos abatement. Um, by keeping this um, kind of checks and balances between, what it would prevent is, they got a met, same to me, wouldn't do this, but any company then wouldn't be able to just tear it down in that test, and it wasn't a problem, fairly, say, cost is answerable.
Okay. The. Yeah, let's see, there is, we are after nine o'clock, so our students, certainly feel free to leave if you want to. Great, say, that's good. AP for governance. Great. Something about the Alice, but yeah, let's go right into future agenda, I descend.
Uh, would you, would we want to put out the agenda? Some sort of expectation or consider some sort of guidance. Selection. I just want to also.
Or I guess the other question is for that we've done special session for that you can ask for next meeting to have, is that too much to ask for the next meeting to delay voting, so.
Well, um, it's not too much to ask that um there are two parts to what you just posed. Actually, I'm gonna say three things. Number one, having general patterns makes good sense. It's players get conversation and share the decision. I strongly encourage, or if there is a will to um approve the plan, the vote on it today. Uh, that allows us to type the, the type of flexibility that actually Graham articulated for these final exams and that really um in, uh, you know, in the winter season, right, where it might be wrong. So I I would, I still strongly encourage that, and that's, that's the way that vote. The third thing is getting ready for a guideline presentation December eighteenth, by not confusing for our team. Uh, we really want to set a variety of scenarios for the biggest group. Um, so yes, overall guidelines make sense for us to discuss and share with the board. I would strongly encourage the vote and on a timeline that is a little bit flexible in December.
So let's add that to our list of future generated topics. Uh, I'm just sure if we can take it up or discuss again.
But I, I think just a continuation of that topic, I'm just gonna ask, the administration can hold as these situations you're coming up with. Through E. O. U. E. O. W. N. S. or texts, whatever, I would just appreciate that.
I over, and by over that, over communication, you're talking about a clear explanation rationale, decision-making process that yeah, it doesn't have to be a call from the Lubr, but just help us understand, okay? And only after midnight and via text. I have this all, okay?
We maybe can talk about this in the vote in the special meeting if that's more appropriate, but I would take that even a step further and say from me for sure, but I think from the board, you're hearing encouragement to maybe err on the side of a snow day when it's possible. So if there's a compelling reason to call for an e-learning day, I think that's awesome, but while we're in the process of figuring out, I know I certainly um, always love it when it's a snow day and so if there's, you know, if it's possible to lean that way, I'd advocate for that.
Thank you, I agree. I have great memories of transformative learning occurring on a snow day.
See if we put some standards together. Okay. Okay, so we are going to adjourn. Um, I move to adjourn to the whole meeting at nine fourteen, you have a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor say aye, and opposed, meaning this adjournment. And we're immediately gonna move into our special.
You're right.
Um, I call it order, the special meeting at nine fifteen o'clock in the foreground of O'Perah High School. It's called the roll.
Mr. Winston?
Here.
Marco Neil?
Yeah.
Mr. Arken?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Dr. Wilson?
Here.
Alex.
Here. Uh, any public comments?
None.
We're going to move to our e-learning plan public hearing. At nine fifteen, Thursday, seven four, twenty five, I call for order of the public hearing, Department of Forest High Schools. Uh, District Two Congress, e-learning plan twenty, twenty twenty six, twenty twenty eight. Notice of this public hearing was published on the school's website and in the November nineteenth, twenty twenty five edition of the Wednesday Journal newspaper. At this time, I ask for any written or oral comments to be, to be received.
Just making up the notation of the sheet. Nowhere who made a public comment regarding the e-learning plan at the beginning of I also have a written saving and have forged all of the one that is.
That's for one person?
Same person.
Yes.
I just have zero, we have that proof. So I just forged the others.
Okay, thank you. Um Moving up and further, at nine sixteen PM, I am now posing the public hearing. Uh, and we'll move to action items. I move to approve the following action, action items. Uh, approval of personal recommendations, including hires, transfers, retirements, resignations. Do I have a second? Sir, let's call the roll.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Arken?
Yes.
Dr. Neil? Yes, Mr. Graham.
Yes. Next, I move uh, for the board to adopt the resolution for the twenty twenty five tax levy. It amounts to eighty seven million, seventy three thousand dollars and certify that the twenty twenty five tax levy resolution would not extend the maximum amount permitted in detail. The business office will file all required documents pertaining to the adopted twenty twenty five tax levy. It could come to our prior to December thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Do you have a second? Second. And is there any discussion or questions?
Yes. I was, I think, Tony, if you wouldn't mind explaining, you know, just so all of the members of the board have clarity in mind and for anyone who may be attending to this discussion, explaining the concept of recapture and how that actually works in practice.
Sure, um, so the way the recapture works and it's, uh, I will say that uh, the terminology rug recapture makes it a little bit confusing to begin with. Um years that you do not take the full amount available for levy, you're able to set that money aside if you need it in future years. And by uh, the process is technically known as the recapture process. Um, but what it does not do is go back and recapture those dollars from the two prior years that um that we did not maximize those. So yeah, it just allows us in future years to levy those dollars going forward. So um, if we recapture seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then what we're not doing is going back two years and collecting the one point five million dollars that was not letting. It's just we are letting that money um, uh, for this year and giving ourselves the ability to levy it in future years.
Thank you.
And just um, a quick note for the board. Um, this item was brought back to like the community finance committee after our last board meeting that we discussed. Um, the. After our last board meeting that we discussed, um, the committee um was uh strongly supportive of um. What we refer to as the option four that was crafted um by the C F C and administration together.
And additionally, would you um please just speak to um the committee's perspective, summarize the committee's perspective on. Um, how this is a discreet prudent thing to do um as opposed to something that is wanting to leave.
Yeah, right, let's sure. Uh, at that meeting, we talked about, uh, we've started internally to have our discussions with um. Uh, you know, departments and uh administration members about areas of their budget where we can find efficiencies um in future years. Uh, places that uh there might be redundancies for savings. Um, those conversations generally come forward as we talk about the budget. Uh, going forward, but identifying, you know, in the lines that we've uh called out where. Excess reduction are needed, where can we find those? Uh, and we talked about that. And its relation to um the evidence-based funding model and making sure that um, you know, as we do those cuts, we're doing it in a. Um, that something rooted factually by the evidence-based funding model, uh, to make sure that we're not. Um, eliminating things that would cause harm to student learning. Uh, then, uh, you know, the committees, uh. As that was crafted and affirmed at the follow-up meeting, um, by taking it as a. Dollar amount and not doing it as a kind of a smooth percentage for the smooth, but buying it as a smooth dollar amount. Um, what it does is um allows us to um. Um, you know, if things turn around, if revenues or expenses look better, when we get the budget and see the net share, um, there's more ability at that point. To um uh not need to do this going forward. Any other questions or suggestions? Is it just called the roll?
Mr. Arken?
No.
Mr. Burris?
No.
Dr. Livingston?
Yes.
Dr. Bill? Yes. Mr. Burrisman?
Yes.
And Mr. Orm.
Yes. Next, we will turn to, or excuse me, um. I move for approval of the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty nine agreement between the Board of Education and Service Employees International Union, Local Seventy Three. The Classified Personnel Association. Uh, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, no questions? There are no, we just put the roll.
Dr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Burrisman?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Dr. Bill? Yes. Mr. Arken?
Yes.
And Mr. Orm.
Yes. Next, I move for approval of the Oak Park River Force High School District Two hundred E-Learning Plan for twenty twenty six to twenty twenty eight school years. Can I please have a second? Second. And any discussion or questions?
Just reiterating for this particular set of minutes, um. I'm I'm going to vote yes on approving the e-learning plan because I'm in favor of the district having that in place if it's needed. Um, but just reiterating of of preference to air for all the reasons we've discussed tonight. Access, equity, quality of learning, um, transformational learning opportunities to air on the side of snow days when possible and peaceful.
I agree. I think though, um. Uh, yeah, I would love to see the. Those things addressed sooner or later, but also have a better. Yes, clearer understanding of the criteria that's supposed to. To to signal my learning day interest.
Who's called the roll?
Mr. Burrisman?
Yes.
Dr. Bill? Yes. Mr. Arken?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Dr. Livingston?
Yes.
And Mr. Orm.
Yes. And finally, I move to approve the uh summer twenty twenty six capital improvement bids for a total cost of three million forty seven thousand nine hundred forty eight dollars. Um. Recommending approving alternates. Uh, number two, three, and six for a total across of six hundred forty eight thousand dollars, excuse me, six hundred forty eight. Thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and seventy eight cents. And reject alternates zero zero one A, B, and C, zero zero four, zero zero five A and B. And approve the contract with Gilbane Building Company for six hundred thirty one thousand dollars. For a total approved budget cost of five million eight hundred sixty eight thousand two hundred sixty four dollars and thirty six cents. Any questions? Second. Any discussion or questions? Who's called the roll?
I would love to speak.
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Burrisman?
Yes.
Dr. Bill? Yes. Mr. Arken?
Yes.
And Mr. Orm.
Yes. And with that, I move to adjourn the special meeting at nine twenty five P M. Uh, can I have a second? Second, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed immediately this event. Thanks.